January tenth, combined meeting and conference for the Mobile County Commission. We thank you for finding your seats. Thank you, Mr. Ross. So glad you could join us today. At this time, Minister Queen Gregory will bring our invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us bow our heads for a word of prayer. Father God, we come to you as humbly as we know how, first and always to tell you thank you for your goodness and your mercy that follows each and every one of us every day of our lives. As we embark upon this Mobile County Commission meeting, Lord, I ask for continual guidance, continual leadership for our commissioners who are doing a job that you have sent them to do, and that is to serve the people. Lord, I ask blessings upon Commissioner Mr. Syria Ludgood, Commissioner Connie Hudson, and Commissioner Randall Dewitt, that you will continue to lead them and guide them in running this Mobile County Commission. In your son's name, this prayer I pray, and in agreement, we all say, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers this morning?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioners. We have multiple speakers this morning. Four have signed up. The first is City Council Councillor Ben Reynolds to speak about item number twenty-two.
Okay, please come to the podium. Thank you. If you would, just give us your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Good morning. I'm Ben Reynolds. I live at three nine oh eight St. Andrews Loop. I'm here to speak on item twenty-two regarding the purchase of the Linksmann Golf Course. And I wanted to come here today just to make it known to all of you how important this is to our community, our city, and I think our county. This will preserve our community for years and years to come. Also wanted to share a few facts that you may have connected the dots on, maybe not. I grew up in South Mobile County and went to Theodore High School. And my dad was a golfer, and every opportunity I got to go play with him, I took advantage of it. When I was growing up, there were several places for us to go play golf. We had, in our general area, we had Bay Oaks Golf Course down in Irvington. We had the Linksmann, which we played frequently. And we also had Gulf Pines Golf Course. And today, none of those exist. And we now have the opportunity before our city, our county, on behalf of our youth and everyone else, golf enthusiasts, to now restore our golfing community in South Mobile County. And of course, this project, as I've heard and been discussing, includes much more than golf. And it includes access to our rivers and our waterways, which is very important to me as well, to make sure that we preserve our rivers and waterways and get Dog River on a course to make it more accessible and a better place to live, work, and play. So I urge all of you, or ask all of you, to vote in favor of this today. And I thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Yes, ma'am. John, former Councilman John Williams signed in next, but he just informed me that Councilman CJ Small would like to speak as well.
I have no objection.
Nope. Mr. Williams, Mr. Small.
Hey, good morning. CJ Small, nine fifty-one Marine Street, three six six oh five. And it's good to be in this meeting now. Use the seat on television, but I've never been in person before and everything. But I appreciate you all's service.
We've seen y'all in person.
Not in meeting, not in this meeting, not in this meeting. But it's so good to have a relationship with the county and also the city. I mean, our partnership is really, you know, is great. And as my colleague has stated, you know, with this particular item that we are looking at, you know, many citizens want water access. You know, they want to get, you know, to our water. One thing that we have issues here in Mobile is that we have a hard time in telling our story, because we really just don't tell it, you know? And the beauty that we have, especially on Dog River and Mobile Bay, I mean, where else can you really just find that? You know, I've had an opportunity to bring several conventions here to Mobile. And one thing about, you know, people when they get here is hey, that they appreciate the scenery, they appreciate that it's affordable, and they appreciate the hospitality. And when people just come here and find out that, hey, there's something in Mobile besides some cows in Alabama, you know, and they're not too sure that we had the golf and the Dog River and the bay, you know, it really brings excitement, you know, to our visitors. And that's one thing that we, as governor officials, city and county, we look to have heads and beds. And this will also help to have the opportunity, not only for our local citizens, but other people that's traveled through Mobile and visited Mobile, to have access to our waterway. And again, I ask that you should want to you to please support this item, again, for our citizens, our visitors, to have more access to our water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Williams?
Morning, Commissioners. John Williams, thirty-nine oh five St. Andrews Loop West, almost ninety days into retirement. And yes, I'm enjoying it. I see it as we have three opportunities here. First of all, it serves a real public purpose in that it is offering a recreational opportunity. We have found that in the complex nearby this location. The soccer complex has the lights on and is engaging young Mobileans almost every day that I pass by there. It also is a preservation opportunity, one that there is some monies available, and it makes it inviting to other governments to look into Mobile and to take this opportunity to preserve this water access. And lastly, it is an opportunity to engage those who have not been exposed to the golf world through the First Tee Program. When this course was last opened, First Tee was very much interested. It's a central place in our city, and there is no doubt that it serves a public purpose. I appreciate y'all's support. And Commissioner, thank you so much for looking into it. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have, we have one other person signed up to speak on the same topic. Would you like him next?
Yes, please.
Mr. Steve Laser?
Well? Well, thank y'all for letting me address the council. My name is Steve Green. A long time, been a long time since I've seen Ms. Connie from council days. I'm here to speak about the opportunity of the golf course. We have a great opportunity. We have fifty-seven hundred feet of water. This project for the price tag we're getting is a great opportunity. We have multiple things that can happen from there. Biggest thing Mobile has happening to us right now is an influx of people. We have huge amounts, you can call any title company, I mean, the real estate business, some builder developers. We're fixing to boom. We can finally turn Cinderella the other way around. And we have five golf courses, but with price of real estate, we're probably going to lose one or two of them over the next few years. Here's a great opportunity to have a golf course for the people along what I call our corridor. And our corridor is hopefully our future expansion that will come all the way from Irvington downtown Mobile, whether it's done through Amtrak or through our own personal train service. But how sweet would it be to be able to come from a racetrack, stop by the soccer stadium, the golf course, come downtown, send that train back the other way, same thing, go north? So with that said, there's a guy by the name of Charles Etsko, who's in economics. He said Mobile is bulletproof till 2032. So the good news is we get to ride that wave. He said basically, he's coming to speak again in March. This guy's phenomenal. He spoke ten years ago and called it to the tee. So we're sitting on the edge of a great opportunity, and here's a great opportunity for this county and city, as like Mr. Small said, to make this happen. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your support. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
We have a final speaker or potential speaker. Mr. Shannon McDonald signed up. He received a summons for Watsonville subdivision, and so he wasn't sure if he wanted to talk to someone to give them opportunity if he would like to. Not summons, that's the wrong word, notice.
Shannon McDonald, one zero one three one, Crete Marl Road, Grand Bay, Alabama. Just here to show my support for item number sixty. We're trying to purchase a piece of property, join in my property, and just to have the approval of the board. We'd appreciate your time and consideration in there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes everyone who signed up to speak today.
I was just going to ask if we could take item number twenty-two out of order. I think some of the people here that spoke today have other things to do, and I was going to see if...
I have no objection.
Item number twenty-two. Approved purchase of approximately one hundred acres of real property located on and around St. Andrews Lane, commonly known as Linksmann's Golf Course, for a purchase price of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus closing costs utilizing project and authorize the commission president to sign all documents related to the transaction.
So moved.
I want to real briefly speak on the item if I can.
You want a second?
I will. I can, I'll second.
No.
No, I just wanted to, first of all, say thank you guys for being here, particularly CJ and Ben and everyone, but you two, it means a lot to know that I have the support of the city of Mobile on this project. I agree with everyone who spoke that this project for me, I remember when I got elected over a year ago, the first thing I did was call Jay Ross to my office and ask him, how do you buy? I didn't know how to buy a piece of property as a county commissioner. And I said, what do we need to do to do this? And so this has been a project that we've worked on for over a year, and I'm excited that we're getting to this point now. And again, I want to thank you guys for being here and supporting it. I think every one of three of the four who spoke live in the neighborhood. So thank you guys for being here and supporting this project.
Commissioner, could you kind of walk through the plans? What's next? What you anticipate when it will finally look like when you complete the project?
Well, I hate to talk about the plans, because I planned on being, playing golf there by now, but I know that things take time. But, you know, I think our next, I think we've really done a lot of due diligence on this project since the beginning. I think we've had a pretty comprehensive feasibility study done. I think there's been some environmental studies completed that showed that this is going to be a good project. I think the surveys are finished. I think the appraisals, everything's done. So what I would like, what I would like to see is after closing, that pretty soon after that, that we will be going into a phase of bidding out, the process of renovating the golf course. You know, it has been closed down for some time. I've had several people look at the golf course. It's not in playable shape, but it's not in horrible shape either, considering what it would cost to build a golf course or renovate a golf course. I don't think it's going to be that expensive. And also, another exciting part of this for everybody, including myself, is of course, the water access, the, you know, so we're looking at a golf course, yes. And I'm excited about that because of several things that's been mentioned today. Number one, we are a golf community, and we have lost several golf courses over the years here due to development. I think one golf course was bought in the Brookley Complex by the Airbus who took over that property and some other things. So with that said, not only that, but for our students. Our students in our schools have nowhere to play golf, and I think golf is an important sport to our schools. And so I'm hoping that we can get them involved with some of the programs that were mentioned before. But then the other thing is, and everybody knows that I'm daily looking for ways to access our waterways in Mobile County. You know, people, we live on the coast, and I feel like people want to preserve our waterways, and they want to utilize those waterways. And I think this gives us another opportunity with, I think Steve said, five thousand foot of waterfront, over five thousand foot of waterfront property comes with this and canals. And so to expand the access to kayaking and fishing and possibly boating and other things in the future. So that's kind of my plan. You know, I would, I'm overly confident maybe that we will be starting construction soon and that start seeing people out there enjoying the waterways and playing golf in that community.
Commissioner, just, we are ready to close. Everything is in order. As Commissioner Dewitt said, title survey, been some title issues all have been resolved, so.
The encroachment issues were resolved?
Well, there are a few encroachment issues. Those are not resolved, and we'll have to look deeper into that from what I hear, what Commissioner Dewitt and I have talked about. Mr. Green, that those encroachments are on part of the fairways, they're not significant, but they do encroach onto the golf course quote property.
And I think most of them are minimal. I think it, for most of them, it may be offense, you know? And I think there may be one or two temporary or not really permanent structures, maybe a shed that's been moved on, built on a property. But I told Jay, I felt confident that with the relationship that I have with the community, and John is the president of the HOA, and I think the community is very supportive of this project, so I think that we'll be able to work through them pretty easily. But there's very few, and they're very minimal.
But they, all that will be resolved before we close?
Commissioner Ludgood, as it stands now, the encroachments would not be resolved before we close. Part of that gets into how long have those encroachments been there? How willing are these few property owners to voluntarily pull them back? Those issues have not been completely explored yet.
But there's no cloud on the title?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I was getting.
And one other thing, Tina Sanchez has been very involved in this project. And if Tina, if you'd like to say anything, I'd like for you to have the opportunity to speak. I'm sorry this has taken so long, but this has been a long project for me, and I'm pretty excited about it.
I've been working on one for eleven years now. I can appreciate it.
Good morning. And I too share your excitement, and it's really gratifying to see this move forward. We will move forward with the master plan process as well, because as you said, this is a golf course opportunity, but it's also a waterfront access and the Dog River watershed, where there is an active blueway, and where we think there's opportunity for stream bank restoration and kayak launch locations. So we'll get to work on that master plan, get some consultants at work as soon as possible.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your input, and we look forward to your help and support as we move this project forward. Thank you. Lynn, since Mr. McDonald is here, and we don't want to keep him all day if we don't have to, can we just take sixty out of order?
Yes.
You're welcome to stay, but I just didn't want... Oh, okay.
Number sixty?
Mm-hmm.
Number sixty, approve waiving section seven point one of the subdivision regulations and approving preliminary and final plat of Watsonville subdivision. Owners are moving in a journey line between two existing parcels, and no new lots are being created. The engineering department has no objections to the granting of this waiver.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming down.
All right. Let's rock and roll, Mr. Hyde.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January tenth, twenty twenty-two, and January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, authorize minor amendment to twenty twenty action plan to reallocate one hundred and two thousand, one thirty-eight, community development block grant, funds from overreach of completed projects to the Grand Farms Road, West Road improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, approve appropriation contract with MLK Civic and Business Organization, any amount of eight thousand, five hundred, from District One funds for operating expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve appropriation contract with Taylor Chapel Outreach, any amount of five thousand from District One funds for its community outreach program for unwed mothers.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, any amount of twenty thousand dollars from District Two funds for cardiovascular equipment for the Sims Middle School weight room.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve appropriation contract with Grand Bay Community Action Committee, any amount of two thousand, four ninety-three, seventy-two, from District Three funds for a Christmas tree for Grand Bay Town Square.
So moved.
Second.
Proactive planning.
Well, I think we're actually paying for last year's Christmas tree.
Yeah, and I didn't even know it was a town.
Okay. Number eight, approve application for transfer of twenty restaurant, retail, liquor, alcohol license of Saturday Inc. or Boondocks Bar and Grill, District Two.
So moved.
Hey, I want to, let me ask a question real quick while we're on... So since we've advertised and voted on the new districts, you know, I know that, does that take effect immediately after the vote? Because...
No.
When would it, when would it actually take?
I think that has been a big question mark, because it says before the next election cycle, but that doesn't give a date certain. And my question was, I know that there are people who have to, if they choose to run for public office in that district, there's a residency requirement. And so this is a question that I also posed to Jay Ross, and maybe he can enlighten us today.
The reason I, the reason I'm asking is because I do realize, you know, that, and I guess this come up because I know where this sits, and it sits in that new, in that new area, which would make that District Three now. And I know you can't disenfranchise people who voted for you or voted for any of the three of us. We still represent them to the end of the next term, because they voted for us and we're their elected official. But I was just wondering about the lines, because I guess technically the reason I'm asking is because this particular place where it says District Two would now lie in the new District Three. And that's why I was...
I think it is still in District Two at this point in time, but I still don't know exactly what date that changes.
Okay.
I think that the new lines technically become the new districts after the twenty twenty-four election. Up until then, the old district lines are in place. Obviously, you'll be campaigning whoever runs for the offices where the new lines are created, but the new lines don't take effect until after the time of the general election.
So at the time someone qualifies to run, they would actually not be in the district that they're qualifying to run in?
They'll have to qualify in the district in which they will be running, where the lines will be. A little confusing for sure, and the staff, legal staff struggle with it for a few weeks till we try to get it figured out.
Would you give us a written opinion on that?
Yes, ma'am. That would be, that would be great.
So that we can all understand it the same way? Thank you.
Happy to be happy to. Great idea.
Thank you.
Number nine, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Michael Square Control Access Gate and Fence Installation.
So moved.
Second.
Number ten, award bid to Thomas Industries, Inc. for office buildout at Camp One for total bid in the amount of ninety-four thousand, eight one six.
So moved.
Second.
Number eleven, approve submission of grant renewal application to the Corporation of National and Community Service for the continuation of the Americorps Seniors Mobile County Foster Grandparent Program for five hundred and forty-five thousand, eight thirty-two, for the project period July first, twenty twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, federal share three thousand, excuse me, unit ninety-five thousand, two ten, state share ten thousand, seven thirty-three, county match one thirty-nine, eight eight nine.
So moved.
Second.
Number twelve, hold a public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed substantial amendment to the program year twenty twenty action plan. This information has been available to the public since February fourth, twenty twenty-two. This expedited public comment period complies with the waiver contained in the federal registered notice, which reduces the duration of required public comment periods from thirty days to five days.
Public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers for or against? Hearing, the public hearing is not closed.
Number thirteen, adopt substantial amendment to the program year twenty twenty action plan following the comment period in public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Number fourteen, authorize subrecipient agreement with Boat People SOS Community Development Corporation, Inc. for an amount of seventy-five thousand, four sixty-eight for health services programs under the community development block grant.
So moved.
Number fifteen, approve appropriation contract with Alabama Humanities Alliance, any amount of five thousand dollars from District One funds for cost of transportation to its annual conference.
So moved.
Second.
Number sixteen, approve amendment to professional services contract with Commercial Diving Services, Inc. to increase contract amount from twenty-four thousand, nine eighty to forty-nine thousand, nine eighty. Additional funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand will be used to provide architectural, history, and stabilization services in historic African town.
So moved.
Second.
Number seventeen, approve SAAAS services agreement with BeneVate, Inc., doing business as neighborly software for professional software services related to the U.S. Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Program, for a term of three years, March first, twenty twenty-two, through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at a rate of twelve thousand per year.
So moved.
Second.
Number eighteen, approve sponsorship agreement with Sims Chamber of Commerce, any amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars from District Two funds for its annual Azeria Festival.
So moved.
Second.
Number nineteen, authorize amendment to subrecipient agreement with Via Health and Fitness, Inc. for food pantry and senior service programs under the community development block grant, command activity description as well as compensation and reporting requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty, authorize advertising, receiving bids for Mitchell Jail Kitchen for citizen boiler replacement.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-one, authorize, excuse me, authorizing and receiving bids for Government Plaza, South Tower Boiler repairs.
So moved.
Second.
Number twenty-two was voted on earlier. Twenty through twenty-three, and here's a change in wording, twenty-three reads, approve application to Economic Development Administration Tourism Construction Grant under the American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Frankenstein renovation, any amount of seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine sixty-three, and authorize the Director of Grants to submit applications as authorized representative.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County, any amount of fifty thousand from District Three funds to be applied to the cost of constructing a new press box.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-five, approve rescinding the part county commission action in January tenth, twenty twenty-two minutes, agenda item number seventeen, which approve the new Mobile County Commission district boundaries to take effect immediately, and approve amending action to have the Mobile County Commission district boundaries in place for the twenty twenty-four county commission election cycle. The candidates for the county commission will be permitted to campaign in accordance with these approved lines.
So moved.
Yes, that answers my question from earlier. I'll second.
Twenty-six, approve appropriation contract with the city of Mobile, any amount of twenty thousand dollars from District Two funds for Hillwood... for Hillwood Project and the city's new sidewalk protocol initiative.
Some move?
Second.
27, approve request from Mobile Police Mounted Auxiliary to waive fees for the use of the John Archer Center on February 22nd through 28th, 2022, in case of inclement weather for preparing and training police forces to patrol during Montegraw events. There will be no cost or preparation to the county.
Some move?
Second.
28, approve lease agreement with Coffee Monster LLC for the period of 12 months, February 15th, 2022 through February 14th, 2023, with an option to renew for two additional 12-month terms, subject to final legal review.
Some move?
Second.
29, approve application for transfer of 011 Lounge Retail Liquor Class II Alcohol License of Wilmer Liquor 2022 LLC for Wilmer Liquor.
Some move?
Second.
Number 30, approve amendment to professional services agreement with Combing Group doing business as Esperion to add additional services consisting of the provision of polling technicians for the 2022 election cycle for the, for judge approbate to be paid from election fund.
Some move?
Second.
31, approve lease agreement with Greater Golf State Fair, Inc. for the use of two rooms for nine days during the May 2022 for poll worker training for probate court at a cost of $100 per hour.
Some move?
Second.
32, approve correction in January 24th, 2022 minutes, agenda item 29. The item should read as follows. Approve six-month lease agreement from the current purchasing cooperative, Amnea, with William Scotsman, Inc. doing business as Will Scott for one mobile office and one toilet unit model in the amount of 34,241.54 Gomesa 20-05 Public Access Master Plan Development Funding for the Cedar Point Location. The correction is to increase the original quoted amount of 33,380.20 by $861.34 in a final lease agreement due to adding a second Americans with Disability Act grant for the men's women's restroom trailer.
Some move?
Second.
33, approve amending project Government Plaza renovations with an increased budget of 180,000 and approve reducing the budget for project Government Plaza window cleaning by 180,000 and transferring these funds to the Government Plaza renovation project. This amendment creates a reallocation of funds from project Government Plaza Window Cleaning to project Government Plaza renovations.
Some move?
Second.
34, adopt a resolution authorizing requests of the County Garage to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list.
Some move?
Second.
35, approve request of the Sheriff's Office to purchase two vehicles with internal funding as follows. The addition of these vehicles will not increase their fleet.
Some move?
Second.
36, approve change order number one for a project Escataba Hollow Park and Campground Improvements Phase One A to increase the amount by 259,392.80. The change order will add underground electric and will increase contract time by 76 working days due to impacts from weather events and supply chain delays.
Some move?
Second.
Number 37, consider taking the following action on this.
Some move?
Second.
38, approve payment in the amount of $10,000 to United Way of Southwest Alabama, Inc. for administrative services provided in relation to community development block grant.
Some move?
Second.
39.
Excuse me, it feels like the air is on.
It does.
The air conditioning. Can we get better just a little bit, please? Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay.
39, approve service agreement for existing Formosan Termites with Knox Pest Control in the amount of 1,500, initial and 250 at annual renewal fee for the period of January 28th, 2022 through January 28th, 2023 for the County Grand Bay Library.
Some move?
Second.
Number 40, approve renewal support for PDQ Deploy and PDQ Inventory Software from pdq.com, in amount of 6,300 for the revenue commission.
Some move?
Second.
Number 41, approve renewal maintenance contract with Clarice, Clarice International, Inc. in the amount of 2,406 for software updates and upgrades for the period of February 3rd, 2022 through February 2nd, 2023 for the James T. Strickland Youth Center.
Some move?
Second.
Number 42, approve renewal maintenance agreement for cranes with Con Cranes, Inc. in the amount of $720 for Public Works Department.
Some move?
Second.
43, approve renewal support for standard biz annual services with Zoom Video Communications, Inc. in amount of 1,099 for the period January 26th, 2022 through January 25th, 2023 for the County Commission.
Some move?
Second.
Number 44, approve 36-month Xerox Coffee Release Agreement with Xerox Corporation under the current purchasing cooperative National Association of State Procurement Officials for the revenue commission at the following locations.
Some move?
Second.
45, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Nine, in the amount of $680 for Project John Paul Road and Nanches Trace Road, gray drain, basin paved.
Some move?
Second.
46, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 16, in the amount of 1,500 for Andre Road, gray drain, basin paved.
Some move?
Second.
47, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects.
Some move?
Second.
48, award bid to John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc. for project Sand Ridge Road for their low bid in the amount of 487,008.7.
Some move?
Second.
49, award bid to John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc. for project Silver Pine Road for the low bid in the amount of 563,637.77.
Some move?
Second.
Number 50, authorize advertising and receiving bids for project Turkey Farm Road, gray drain, basin paved.
Some move?
Second.
51, authorizing advertising and receiving bids for project Tannaweyans Road, additional lanes and bridge.
Some move?
Second.
52, authorize advertising and receiving bids for project Bush Lane and Carol Plantation Road Resurfacing.
Some move?
Second.
53, authorize advertising and receiving bids for project Safety Improvements on Celeste Road.
Some move?
Second.
54, adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain real property by eminent domain for project Dolls Road Track 17 and 18.
Some move?
Second.
55, adopt a resolution proving construction agreement for a transportation alternatives program with the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation improvements to selected curb ramps throughout Mobile County urban area to conform to American for Disabilities Act's requirements and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the resolution and the agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
Some move?
Second.
56, accept two separate portions of the Platte Drainage Easements in Highland Park Subdivision and Lakeview West Unit One.
Some move?
Second.
57, excuse me, 57, adopt a resolution approving construction agreement for a local road safety initiative project with the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for project safety improvements on Bellengrave Road and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the resolution and the agreement on behalf of Mobile County.
Some move?
Second.
58, approve of preliminary and final plat of re-subdivision of Lot Two, Camp Bowie Family Subdivision and preliminary and final plat of Swift Mobile, Alabama subdivision.
Some move?
Second.
59, approve preliminary final plat of Ellens Cove Unit Two, Unit Two subdivision and preliminary final plat of Irvington Oaks Estate Unit Three.
Some move?
Second.
Number 60 was voted earlier. Number 61, approve assigning a contract professional design engineering services for safety improvements to Bellengrave Road to Tim Lee Rehorn and Associates, Inc.
Some move?
Second.
62, award bid to McElhenny Construction Company LLC for project Sasser Lane and Lundie Road for their low bid in the amount of 1,047,517.59.
Some move?
Second.
63, approve assigning contract for professional bridge inspection services for countywide bridge inspection to Voca, Voca, Inc.
Some move?
Second.
64, approve supplemental agreement number one with McInnis Construction Company LLC, project South Craft Highway Bridge Replacement for modifications to bridge, abutments, and wing walls in order to preserve the location of an existing gas main to increase the contract by 84,470.52, cost to be reimbursed by Flatspire Golf, Inc.
Some move?
Second.
65, approve, excuse me, award bid by Bay Area Contracting, Inc. for project by Yulebatty Streets for their low bid in the amount of 112,138.88.
Some move?
Second.
66, award bid to Young's Tree Service for project Mobile County Soccer Complex Tree and Stump, Stump Removal for their low bid in the amount of 30,000.
Some move?
Second.
And 67, commission announcements and/or comments.
Actually, I wanted to make an introduction. We have James and Nina Kim in the audience today. They are the proprietors of Coffee Monster and I just wanted to introduce them and let them know how happy we are to have them in the building. And when, when do you anticipate being able to open? Beginning of April. Wonderful, we're really looking forward to it. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you guys. I just have one other thing and I'm sure that, I know we haven't met since the January the 28th and I'm sure everyone in the engineering department is aware of this, but I wanted to announce that the passing of Michael Speek. I think everybody here knew and respected Michael. He was a great engineer, but beyond being a great engineer, he was a great citizen to Mobile County. And the, just the things that he did beyond his professional life and, and, and the volunteer work and, and things that he's done for children with disabilities and parks and playgrounds and schools in our community. And so I just wanted to announce that sad passing of Michael Speek.
Thank you for mentioning that. And, and also wanted to mention about Carrie Mosley, West Mobile County Park Director. She passed away as well and she will be greatly missed. She had been at that park for 37 years or something like that. I don't know, a long time. But she did a wonderful job and will certainly be missed. Anything else? The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Number 68, approve request for motion to adjourn until February 24th, 2022.
Some move?
Second.